Tom.
Tom.
Brady.
Tom.
Tom.
Summing.
Ken.
All right.
All right, set on right, set on off.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. So good to see so many of you here with us in the chambers this evening. Those of you that are watching at home on TV 6 and also on our YouTube channel, thank you for taking a few minutes out of your time this evening to be with us and learn about your town government. We'll start as we customarily do with our roll call of council members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Huffman.
I'm Tom Lawson.
Happy Thursday. My name's Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I am Ken Sadler.
Hello, I'm Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monte Long.
If you'll join us, please, we're going to start our meeting with an invocation led by Councilmember Long, followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Huffman.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We pray for guidance for our town, help guide our residents and council members to do the right thing that glorifies your name. Lord, thank you for all your wonderful blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Also with us this evening is our town manager, Stacy Tolbert, our town attorney, Elliot Bus, our town planning director, Lynn Cochran, our town public works director, John Hannah, our town clerk, Angie Lord, and our town finance director, Pam Orell. Veronica Lajer gives me the thumbs up from the back door, so she's here as well. She's present but not seen. I'd also like to recognize our planning board member, Don McLean. Thanks for being with us tonight. Always good to have you visit with us because you all do so much important work for our town. It's nice to see your face in person. Very good. Council members, we did have, let me just double check. Angie, did we send out the new agenda with the closed session?
Yes, sir, we sure did.
Very good. So we've had no changes to the agenda since then?
No, sir.
All right. Council members, unless there are some changes or revisions, we'll enter a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Huffman, a second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is our agenda for this evening. Stacy, you have our consent agenda.
Yes, sir. On tonight's consent agenda is Resolution 2025-018, financial statements for 10 months ended April 30th, 2025. Ordinance 2025-013, order to collect the 2025 taxes. Ordinance 2025-014, order to collect 2024 and prior years' taxes. Approval of agenda briefing minutes for April 24th, 2025. Approval of budget workshop minutes from April 24th, 2025. And lastly, approval of regular meeting minutes for May 8th, 2025.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council, our minutes, our financial reports, and any other items that are routine in nature. Council members, unless there are any changes or revisions, we'll undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Unfortunately, PJ was not available tonight, so I'm sure he'll send out our monthly report to us and an email here shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, there are the two opportunities for you to talk to the council tonight. This first one is our public forum coming up in just a moment, and then once again, at the end of the meeting, should anybody have anything they wish to say and conclude our meeting tonight. Anybody wish to speak to the council? I see no movement. I do see breathing, but I don't see any movement. Okay, very good. We do have an opportunity here where we do have to go into closed session briefly to discuss a personnel matter. Elliot, do you have the appropriate language for us?
Certainly, Mayor. We'll be doing a motion to go into closed session for a personnel matter that is to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents, excuse me, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment of a individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer under Statute 143-318.11.
Very good. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Mr. Long now is up to bat and batting a thousand with his seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, this will be just a brief break. We are going to go into a closed session, but we will return hopefully before any of you go to sleep or have your dinner. All righty, moving on to new business.
Melissa's not here.
Very good. New business. Stacy, you have the first item.
Okay. So tonight before you is Ordinance 2025-001 for the fiscal year 2526 budget. Thank you for the opportunity to present highlights from proposed fiscal year 2526 budget. The budget as proposed will allow us to maintain current service levels, fund reserves, plus allow us to continue working on projects currently authorized by town council. The proposed general fund budget is eight million, sorry, for the upcoming fiscal year. This budget as proposed is balanced with $234,844 in fund balance from the general fund and represents an increase of 11.55% over the previous year budget. The budget as proposed includes a property tax decrease from 21.7 cents per $100 of valuation to 18 cents. This represents a decrease of 3.7 cents per $100 of valuation. One cent of the tax rate generates approximately $258,428 of revenue. Forsyth County has completed and released new valuation numbers as part of a four-year cycle. In Forsyth County, the growth in the valuation numbers for real property ranged anywhere from 20% to 300% due to the unprecedented increases in the sales prices of homes in the area. The overall increase in real property in the town of Lewisville was 55%. The town also collects a levy for the Willow Run Municipal Service District. The current tax rate is 10 cents per $100 of valuation. The tax rate in the proposed budget remains unchanged in order to reimburse the general fund for the required dam repairs. This tax rate will also allow them to fund their current operating expenses. There are several projects in progress, including the roundabout at Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road and the Great Wagon Road. The roundabout project will include necessary sidewalk connections along with streetscape work, lighting, and landscaping. While the construction of the Great Wagon Road is administered by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the town will participate financially on improvements such as streetlights, wider sidewalks, water and sewer infrastructure, and roundabout enhancements. In addition to these construction projects, the town is responsible for maintaining a 56.9 miles of right-of-way. This right-of-way includes the roadway, sidewalks, stormwater infrastructure, and street trees. These items are nearing the end of their life expectancy. The proposed budget allocates funds to fulfill the town's obligation to its residents to rehabilitate and preserve these physical systems. Lastly, work continues on the town's update to the Unified Development Ordinance. As the project nears its conclusion, the proposed fiscal year budget contains funding to complete this work. In the interest of transparency, the budget was posted to the town website on April 11th. Multiple budget workshops were held leading up to the scheduled public hearing on the proposed budget, which was held on May 8th. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the mayor and to the town council for their vision and guidance as we worked to develop a budget that will provide the resources to implement their policies and address community needs. I would like to convey my appreciation for the many members of the community who have shared their thoughts and ideas, including those serving on the town's advisory boards and committees. Next, this budget would not have been prepared without the diligent efforts of the town staff. I would like to thank the entire team here at the town for their hard work and dedication in serving the residents of Lewisville. Thank you.
Any questions? Excuse me, any questions for Stacy? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll undertake a motion to approve our budget for 2526.
So moved to approve Ordinance 2025-001 to 2526 budget.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? Very good. Just as a footnote, for those of you that follow this kind of thing, and I can see the fries out there, and they follow it very closely, but we had a number of workshops. We took a great deal of time to flush out a lot of the issues that we really need to be dealing with. And the biggest issue that we need to be dealing with is funding our reserves again. For the last two or three years, we have not funded our reserves, and that's where we get the money to do sidewalks, to do parks, to do all kinds of miscellaneous things. We just need to have the money. And instead of borrowing money, we try to build it up in our capital reserves, and then we pay cash for it or only a minimum amount of financing. So the big increase, I think, in the budget this year is the contribution to our capital reserves.
That and street paving.
And street paving, that's right. Mr. Hannah, you have $875,000 worth of money to do a great job on our roads.
Thank you, and it will be utilized.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, folks?
I would say this, too. One thing that I appreciated with the group as we deliberated this, a lot of people up here have served a lot of different years, different capacities, but sometimes these budget conversations in different towns and municipalities, it becomes a task to hit a number. Nobody really has much conversation about how they're getting to that number. It's just, oh, you've got this much money in ancillary supplies, could we make it this? Okay, great. Without a conversation about, do we need the supplies? This discussion that was had with this group of people, I came on sort of late to the show for this, being appointed, but it was actual conversation about making sure we could give some money back, try to be responsible with it, but within the context of what's good for the town, we need to consider the future, we need to consider our current bills and all of that. So, and lastly, I would remind people, as I usually do, we all pay taxes here, too. And so we have to live by our own sword. And so there's a deep interest to make sure that that's done responsibly, not just for the public, but for our own families. So I appreciate everybody being here tonight, and that's all I have to say.
Very good. We have a motion.
Well, and any increases to expenses for the town are often outside the control of the council. Waste management, for instance, their contract goes up every year, and as we get new residents, then the requirements, their contract requires that we increase their reimbursement for those new residents. So, and the sheriff's department, we have zero control over that, but the sheriff's department is often a fairly significant increase year over year. So those things really aren't things that we can do anything about, but we have to pay for them. It's a responsibility of the town to do that. The only other thing I don't recall being mentioned that was a fairly significant expense coming up is sewer along the Great Wagon Road that we were obligated to. We obligated ourselves to that some time ago and made the decision to honor that obligation several months ago. So anyway, those are the additional things that I think about and that we thought about during the deliberations of the budget.
I'd like to add to that. Stormwater management's another federal mandate that we have to pay for, and now with the next election, there'll be a primary. That's going to cost the town $60,000, I believe.
$56,000.
And we had no control over that, so these expenses really do add up.
Anyone else? Council members, we have a motion and a second. We've completed the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Once again, staff, great job. Thanks for all you do. Pam, you have the next three items for us.
Yes, the next three items on the agenda are amendments to our three capital reserve ordinances. The first one is Ordinance 2025-015. This is amending our municipal land capital reserve ordinance, and beginning in fiscal year 2025, 2026, the amendment proposes to make the annual contribution $25,000 from the general fund, and this will continue until June 30th, 2035, or until the fund reaches a balance of $1 million.
Any questions for Pam? Entertained a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
The next one is Ordinance 2025-016. This is amending the Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve Fund. The amendment says that beginning in fiscal year 2526, the annual contribution from the general fund will be $100,000. This will continue each year until June 30th of 2030 or until the fund reaches a balance of $500,000.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Not really a question, Pam, but I just wanted to make sure that for the public, it's pretty clear that we have recommended, our staff has recommended, and if we approve all three of these, then the amounts no less than these contribution amounts. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. You can always put in more, but it will be no less than these amounts. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else, council?
Yes, sir, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Pam, just to clarify, Mayor, this capital reserve fund for Parks and Rec does allow us to provide necessary maintenance to our existing parks, correct?
No.
I don't believe so. That's going to come out of our operating.
Okay.
Yeah, capital reserve funds are strictly for capital purchases. Any operating will come out of the general fund.
Anyone else? All right. May we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve Ordinance 2025-015 to amend municipal buildings. That one, too. Yeah.
That one, too.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Hunt, a second by Mr. Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
And lastly, we have Ordinance 2025-017. This is amending the sidewalks, bike paths, and greenways capital reserve fund. Beginning in fiscal year 2526, the amendment will allow for an annual contribution of $100,000 from the general fund until June 30th of 2035 or until the fund reaches a balance of $1 million.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lawson makes a motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. John, you've got the next two.
Thank you for your consideration tonight. We have two resolutions regarding contracts for maintenance and beautification of the town grounds. The Resolution 2025-019 is, and these are both one-year contracts for the 2025-26 fiscal year. The first one is, and in your packet, just as a correction, there was an original version of the agenda that had the wrong contract number for this one, but this is for the annual horticultural maintenance and beautification of town properties and is a continuation of the services provided by Hoosier Horticulture. The contract amount is for $97,284.
Any questions for John? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Don, happy Thursday. So I had, I know that I talked about this a little bit during budget. This contract, we go out and look at this, how, every year, you take a look at this particular contract? Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am. We adjust because, sorry, in the last few years, we've added a lot of, you know, a lot of territory. We added the gateway. We've added expansions at Jack Warren Park. We've pulled some services out. We've added some services here, there. We've moved things. And so, yes, these are things that are kind of reviewed annually. They were not, they're not always bid annually, but they are reviewed, adjusted, and sort of repriced annually.
Yeah, and one of the things that I just want to make sure the record reflects is that if we're able to make sure we're going out and bidding these things in future years, because if I recall, it had been a few years, and we've got some other vendors that we're working with that we could consider approaching them about consolidation or maybe moving some, like some of the other mowing contracts, and some of those, they also do this type of work. So I just, if that's something that we can look at in future budget years and future years, is going out and bidding that contract or looking at how we could potentially consolidate our other suppliers, our other vendors, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be happy to do that, and we'll certainly look at how we need to revisit and possibly even bid these, several of these contracts in the next, as we're planning for the next fiscal year.
And just to clarify, this particular vendor has been doing great work for us for many, many years. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. We have no reservations about continuing our business with these, with both of these contractors, as a matter of fact.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else? What's your pleasure, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Was that Mr. Huffman? Thank you. Makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you. And Resolution 2025-020 is a contract for the regular mowing and maintenance of town grounds for 2025-26. It's the same. It's a single-year annual contract. This is for everything that is mowing and trimming related that's outside the beautification contract, and this contract is with Lawn Masters of the Triad for $74,422.26. It includes the maintenance of the dams and a lot of the work that we do out at the Willow Run MSD as well.
Any questions? Entertained a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second.
Mr. Huffman.
Mr. Huffman, would you guys talk a little bit?
Differently.
Just talk my direction. Maybe I can differentiate between your voices. So I'm going to backtrack, and Mr. Huffman makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Angie, you have our next item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So before council tonight, we have Resolution 2025-008 to amend the facility use exemption application. This is before council for consideration to update the application that the Special Projects Committee reviewed and made recommendations to add detailed information from the applicants requesting a waiver for a facility usage fee. Redline documents had been provided to council in the packet and was reviewed with council at the briefing last week.
Very good. I'm going to turn real quickly to the chairman of the Grants Committee for any comment that she would like to make.
Thank you, Angie, for that information in the background. We do have a subcommittee for the grants and for those awards, and it is Ms. Hunt and also Ivan and myself on that committee, and if they have any comments as well. But we did look at this application that they have, and since that time, we do have a new application that's a little more thorough, but we went on their application, and then the suggestion of approval or not is brought before the council. Also, the staff has looked at it and made recommendations, and then we discuss it for final approval. And we did decide last Thursday that we would approve the fact that they could have, they could reserve a room. And how often was it? A year?
Are you thinking about the flyers?
For the flyers.
That's the next item, but I can combine those if you would like, and then you would take separate motions. I'd like to take them separately.
I want you to take them separately.
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying. So now we're just looking at the change in the application.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. So, yes, and the staff did a great job changing the application and just making it a little more thorough. And so that was approved, and I appreciate the work on that, and the subcommittee had approved that as well.
Any other questions? No comments? Yes, ma'am.
Just for everyone in the public, I was unavailable last week due to medical, so I've got some questions that I normally ask during briefing, but Angie, do you know how many revisions of this application we have taken, by chance?
I do not, but I could look into that and research it and get back with you.
Okay. If I recall, and Chairman, or Chairwoman, you may know, it's probably been two or three, does that sound right, that we've looked at this application and made something in that realm? Okay.
Yes. It wasn't extensive, but it is helpful to expand it a little, make it clearer.
And that's the entire purpose of this particular application, is just to ensure that whoever the applicant is, is that it's, that the burden is placed on them to provide us with additional information so that then the committee can make the determination.
That is correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I would like to add one more thing. Also, as a member of the committee, one thing that this does is, to your point, Melissa, puts the burden on the organizations that are applying, but it also removes a little bit of the guessing that the committee or other members of council may make if there's just a checkbox marked on the previous application that, and a lot of these nonprofits and organizations we see in our community. So we may think that they've been doing something, we may think that they're active, we may see it every day, but this allows them to actually illustrate it and, again, puts that burden on them so that we are making an informed decision on what they are providing us. So it definitely, it provides a little bit of clarity for us, but it also provides us with a little bit of making decisions simply on the application and not in frances elsewhere.
And it actually opened up an application. They may not be individuals that are residents of Lewisville, but they do a lot for the community, and so instead of saying, oh, you know, most of your members are not residents of the town, that will not exclude you from possibly being approved. And so we just try to make it a little clearer and being a little more inclusive.
Very good. Any other questions or any thoughts? All righty, entertained a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Committee members, thank you for your work. Staff, thank you for your work on this. All righty, Angie, you have the next one as well.
Yes, sir. So before council is Ordinance 2025-018, which was the application from the Piedmont Flyers Club for a facility use exemption and to amend Chapter 16 of the facility use exemption list. The request was from the Piedmont Flyers Club. During the briefing on June 5th, it was the consensus of council to allow the club to use the Great Wagon Room only within the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The ordinance before council would amend the town code, Chapter 16, adding the Piedmont Flyers as an exempt user for the Great Wagon Room at the community center. Staff is seeking the pleasure of council.
Thank you. And also, Angie, if I'm correct, this also limits, if they want to do an additional use of a building, did we decide to give them a half-price rate or a full-price rate?
No, sir. My recollection was it would be for their monthly meetings, which they have responded to me and confirmed that they're looking at once a month on a Monday evening.
Great. But if they should decide to do another event other than their annual or their regular monthly meeting, that is not comped out?
No, sir. That was not what the consensus of council was that I received last week. That was my understanding as well, and thank you. I had reversed those two on the agenda, but council did agree for approval of the use of that room, and so make a motion that we accept it and be approved.
I have a question. What is it? Now the time?
Go ahead and second it, and then you can ask your question.
I will wait for my questions, sir.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Welch, a second by Dr. Sadler. Ms. Hunt, you have a question?
Yes. So this particular organization, and again, ignorance on my part because I was not at the meeting last week, and so I'm just kind of catching up and reading paperwork.
the meeting last week and so I'm just kind of catching up and reading paperwork. This organization, we would approve for recurring use on a monthly basis. Okay. Did council consider approving it just for a one-time exemption? Did, was that part of discussion? Versus recurring?
Jane, you can jump in or I can jump in.
Okay. My understanding was it's one time. They'd have to come back if there was more than once. Is that what your minutes reflect, Angie?
Once a month.
Once a month.
For a year.
It's recurring.
Yes.
Their application stated monthly with dates to be determined.
Right. So in other words, we are granting, if this ordinance goes through, then we are granting them monthly use of the facility every month and they're also going on to our permanent ordinance change for the Mary Alice Warren. Is that accurate?
I can add some clarity to that, Melissa. What this ordinance would reflect if approved is that they would be allowed at no cost to use the great wagon room only. That's the conference room in the Mary Alice Warren Community Center for their monthly meeting. They would not be allowed to use any other portion of the facility or any other town affiliate, facilities such as the square or the Galloway Community Center. If they wanted to do something like that, they would have to come back before council and request that. So the, the only recurring use that they, that this ordinance is allowing is for them to use the great wagon room on a monthly basis for their monthly meetings. That, that's what they, that's what their request was, not for a special event or anything like that, was just a place for them to hold their monthly, kind of like board meeting.
If we put them on, if we change ordinance and we throw them on as a, as an ordinance, is there other organizations that have that kind of exemption?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yeah, that, that have kind of parameters, if you will. Yes, ma'am.
And part of, part, part of the discussion last week, I think how we arrived at this decision was that that is a little used room. And so it would, it would be available to them on a fairly regular basis without being in competition with others who would want to use it, just based on current use. And so that was one of the things that was a part of the consideration for going forward. And folks who are on the exemption list are at our pleasure anyway. You know, so anyway, that's, that's, if there was some reason that we found that we wanted to remove, whatever group, we could do that.
Thank you for that reminder.
I think we have a similar agreement with the Boy Scouts.
No, not the Boy Scouts, but for instance, the, the public schools that are like Louisville Elementary, Louisville Middle and a couple of the high schools that our residents, the majority of our residents attend, they, they have some parameters, like they can only use a facility four times a year rather than just anytime. So there are some other organizations that, that have a little bit of a caveat for being on that list. It's, it's not just, they can use anything at any time. There's some, some parameters around that.
Well, we do have Civic Club, VFW, American Legion.
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, who meet monthly.
Historical society.
But they're not on the exemption list.
They are on that list.
They are. With the requirements of a particular room.
No, not for those organizations. They're, they're kind of, we're grandfathered, they're put on the, that list very, very early on.
Yeah, I think my hesitation, well, not I think, my hesitation is that this is a small organization and when we went through committee meeting with it, when we looked at the application, if I recall correctly, the application did not give us much information regarding its use and how they serve our residents. Now, I understand from further conversations that they have donated some money to the Civic Club and I know that there's some relationships there, but I think my, my hesitation with this particular organization is the, how small they are, the fact that we're kind of starting another precedence of approving small organizations that may not have a direct benefit. They did not include any of those direct benefits in their application. So, but that's my, my thought on it and Mayor, I'm ready for...
Yeah, we, yeah, we were aware of their, we were aware of their contributions, but it wasn't brought out at the committee.
Right. It wasn't on the application. Correct.
And if I may, real quick, before we continue the, my hesitancy on this one, after reviewing in the committee and with the briefing, is to your point. We, a couple of months ago, for example, on this exemption list of Chapter 16, the facility use exemption list formerly stated once and for South County Schools, which meant that any school in the district could use any facility in Louisville basically anytime they wanted to. We narrowly tailored that to include the four schools that Louisville has students going to. So for our committee and for this council previously, we have narrowly tailored this list of qualifying organizations to specifically state and specifically, the word, work and organize and provide a consistent benefit to the residents, not the town of Louisville as a government, but to the residents. And to Melissa's point, that wasn't ironed out in the application. It wasn't stated. There was a statement of a contribution made to another Louisville-based nonprofit. But again, there wasn't much elaborated on what occurs in Louisville and what happens. So that's just something I want to put on the record before we vote.
Yeah. Please refer to previous items where we modified the application to better reflect that information.
Also, Mike mentioned that they were filling out the other application before we reviewed it and have the new application now. So that's also part of our decisions, but...
All the question?
My recollection, excuse me.
Sorry, go ahead.
My recollection during that discussion last week really turned on two things. One was the availability of a room that is little used by anyone else that would be used by them on a monthly basis. But in addition to that, that they had made contributions, I think I heard $8,000 one year and $5,000 another year to, to benefit the citizens of the town. Now, if that's not accurate, then I would not be in favor of it. But that's what I recall us arriving at was the decision to go forward because they were actually making contributions beyond the Civic Club that were benefiting citizens in town. If that's not accurate, then, then I wouldn't be in favor of it either.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. In fact, they have their annual charity right that they do for to raise money for Louisville. And they, they do the food campaigns and they do, I think the Civic Club. I think last year, they did send, I believe, $5,000 to Western North Carolina to help with Halloween relief. So it's not as if they're just coming out here writing. Anything else, please?
Yeah, just respectfully, Mayor, I mean, I, I understand that that's what they've done, but that was nowhere reflected on the application.
We understand that. That's why we redid the application.
Okay. So the approval tonight that we're making is going to be based off of the application that they submitted to us last, or...
Any ancillary decision that you had?
At the council. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that is a four to two with Mr. Huffman and Ms. Hunt in opposition. Five to two with Mr. Hunt, Ms. Hunt and Mr. Huffman in opposition. Very good. Town manager contract renewal, I guess that's on my plate. We have been fortunate in Louisville to have a number of managers and all of them have made their own contributions to making the town a little better place to live, making our government run a little more efficiently. But I do want to say that in observation of our current manager over this last year, there has been a quantum leap in how the staff works together and our efficiencies and what we're able to accomplish. The number of, as those people who've watched the guys that spin the plates in the air and keep eight or 10 of them going at one time, how we've been able to keep a lot of projects moving forward at one time. As a committee, the administrative group met, we reviewed with the manager her last year, we reviewed her goals. I think across the board, there was no, no council member who had anything to praise for the work that the manager is doing. So that's, that's always a good sign. So we have a contract, her contract renewal, just the highlights of it. This is a five-year contract. This will commence on July 1, 2025 and stretch until July, June 30, 2030. Her base salary, her salary is going to be $133,251. Yeah, that's how I'm with trying to memorize your guys' voices too. So give me numbers, give me voices, we'll get there. Council members, let me just open up the floor at this time for any of you who would like to make a comment on the manager's performance and contract.
Yeah. All right. So I have the pleasure of being able to sit on the administrative committee and we spent, gosh, two, two and a half hours, maybe even more than that, kind of taking a look at Stacy's contract and, and her performance. Stacy came into the meeting well-prepared. She had her goals laid out in front of her. Three out of the four goals that she had set for this particular fiscal year, she was able to accomplish. The one that was not accomplished was outside of her control. It was more of a, Mayor, you may have to kind of fill me in on that one, but it was outside of her control. We, we actually are extremely happy with the performance that she has shown our town. She's done a fantastic job of bringing staff together, putting policies and procedures in place, doing some evaluation work that had not been necessarily done in prior years. And so I'm very excited for you and for the future of the town of Louisville. I think us giving her that five-year extension regardless of what council sits next in the next election, she has some stability, which the town of Louisville absolutely is deserving of and should have in future years is to have our leadership be stable. And so I'm very grateful for council's opportunity to sit on that administrative committee, but well-deserved Stacy.
Anyone else?
I will say too, what we're, what this town is getting with Stacy is phenomenal. I served with her when she was the lead planner and I was on the planning board. A lot of managers can master the technical aspects of running a town. But to me, the most difficult aspect is, number one, working with elected officials. Could there be anything more difficult than that? Number two, working with the public and being able to do that in a way that doesn't offend anybody, that, that has a good integration with people, has a good rapport with people. And she's got that in spades. You can't teach that. My experience has been people either have that skillset or they don't. And she has it and I think, I think we're fortunate to have her and I think that she'll serve us for a long time. And I think if you haven't met her yet, please take an opportunity to do so. I think you'll be very pleased with what you see. Thank you, Stacy.
Our, our approach to assessment and evaluation is to look at performance and then comparability. And that's what we did and you, you've already heard all the accolades regarding Stacy and her performance. She's very level in her demeanor. Doesn't seem to get rattled, at least I've not seen it. So if you look at performance, everybody said how well she's done performance-wise. And then you look at comparability among towns around the state and how people are compensated for the work that they do, we feel that the decision that we made regarding her compensation is appropriate.
I'd like to say, yes, thank you, Stacy, for all the time and effort. You are well-respected and that's obvious and you're very knowledgeable. If we, we haven't thought of something, you have thought of it. The way you work with the other personnel, I just want to say thank you, all you do for the town and the obvious caring. And as I've said to you, you seem to love your job.
Is that sunburned or is that just a little blushing?
Probably a little bit.
Anyone else?
Stacy, I was going to say, I think you've done a fantastic job and you're very timely on response and finding answers. And if you don't know the answer, you find it and get back and just excited that you're with us in this, at this level with the town. So, thank you.
Last but not least, no, I want to say one thing that I've heard this council say in other councils and other areas and et cetera, is that joining a council, you've got like six months to a year of, I got to get my feet under me, I've got to learn what the town does, I've got to learn how it works, I've got to learn how the personalities are. And Stacy, this is your, ending your ninth year with the town of Louisville or eighth?
Let's see, I'm in year seven.
Don't know where I got eight or nine from, but year seven. So even with that much time, I mean, working as planning director and formerly assistant town manager, when we kind of threw her the, the bone at being in town manager role, there wasn't a, okay, give me three months, let me get my feet under me, let me make sure that the decisions I'm making are right. She just jumped right in and made them. And that's something that, again, to your point, something that's not taught, something that people just do, that they're, they're confident in doing that. So thank you for just jumping in. I think that's something that was part of the reason this council did choose you is because we're like, we need somebody that's able to jump right in, get things done. I mean, great wagon road's been delayed 30 years and we finally broke ground with it and I wasn't even here yet. Wasn't that the first time? So that alone, that project and getting it started within, and getting the groundbreaking six months to eight months after you took over that role, that's, that's a feat and I think all of us can say that we're proud to have you. So thanks.
Thank you all. All very, very much.
You know, Mr. Huffman says he, last but not least, but the mirror's always last.
Will you talk first?
But there are two, just two quick points I want to make. Number one is towns and organizations and businesses all have cultures and that culture starts with the leadership of the town. In Louisville, we try never to say no. We always try to find a way, a pathway that we can say yes. And that's quite different than many other governments and many other organizations. And it takes a whole lot more work to do that. But that's the culture and that's the culture that Stacy brings and understands. And it's the culture that she's imparted to the staff and our residents know when they come in and they have a question or they have a concern or they have a complaint, that they're not going to get no out of the chute. They're going to say, we may not be able to do that, but let's see what we can do. And so that's, that's a tremendous quality. The final point I want to make on this, there will be a number of us, like maybe all of us or maybe six of us, but it's certainly going to be a large number of us that won't be sitting here next year as a council. Stacy's value as a manager has just jumped exponentially because she understands where we are, how we got here and where we want to go next. And so I'm hoping, and I'll just say this, is any of you out there considering running for the council, you've got a great shoulder here, shoulder here. Go ahead and put the harness on her and let her pull the wagon because she will do a fabulous job for you. All righty. Anything else?
[inaudible].
Very good. We voted on that, did we? No, we didn't. We got down a long road there and so we're at the end of the road.
Didn't we want her to give a speech first?
All righty. Then we do need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Tom, you made the motion?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Long made the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is a resounding unanimous.
Thank you all. Very, very much.
And you get to have the stage for administrative reports.
All right. Well, here comes the fun stuff. I always like to report every month the upcoming events and things that are coming up in between now and our, and our next time that we will be sitting in this room together. First, on June 21st at Shallowford Square, the Entertainers will be playing at our Street Party and Food Truck Festival. There will be music and numerous food trucks from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I think Veronica, our communication specialist, was able to post that variety of food trucks that we'll be having today on our social media. So check that out. On Saturday, June the 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., we will hold our annual special Independence Day tribute concert featuring On the Border. That is the Ultimate Eagles Tribute Band. And there will also be a special tribute by the American Legion Post 522. So that's always a special occasion there. And then lastly, town offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th in observance of Independence Day.
Any questions for Stacy?
CPR class that was.
Oh, that's already been. It was like the earlier last week.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am, on June 6th.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you're up.
Yes, counsel. We just wanted to make you aware that we have received a resignation from one of our committee members from the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Commission. She is moving away, accepted a better job. And so staff will have a notice in the newsletter that will go out in July, the 1st of July, making the public aware that there is an opening and that they can submit applications and we hope to be able to present those to you and get an appointment made quickly.
Very good. Thank you, Angie. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the second opportunity, should anybody wish to address the council. This is where we encourage you to share your thoughts, anything that's on your mind. Anyone wish to share anything with the council? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. State your name as if we didn't know it and your address.
Susan Frye, Will Austin Court in Louisville. Susan Frye, Will Austin Court, in Lewisville. I hate that I'm up here today to bring something up that I brought up not long ago. House Bill 765 has now morphed into Senate Bill 205, which is now sitting in the House Committee for a vote. The Senate Bill 205 started off as a two-page swimming pool regulation. That's it. It's now 19 pages, most of which is just House Bill 765 attached to it. This is taking away the authority of all our small towns, all our governments, all our small governments, cities and towns, municipalities. It's got to stop. If, you know, if they want this bill to go through, then be honest about it. Don't stick it on a swimming pool regulation and think that people aren't going to know about it. It's despicable, and we have to find a way to stop this nonsense. I'm begging everyone, not just, you know, Lewisville, not just Forsyth County, everyone in the state, this affects everyone in the state, please call your representatives, please email them, please email all of them. I've sent emails to every single representative in the state. Please, ask them to stop this. It's taking away our authority. Our town, we work so hard, we have a great planning board, we, you know, we want things done a certain way. Other towns have different needs, they need things done a different way. We cannot have the state coming in here and telling us what to do. I can't even, I'm so frustrated, and I know so many of you are, and I'm begging you, please, contact your representatives, spread the word, call your neighbors, call your friends, call your enemies, call anybody, and just ask them to take a look at this and beg them. Please, do not let this bill go through, it's ridiculous. And ask them to, you know, spend some time and collaborate with the municipalities for what their needs are. And I can't say anymore, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just as a footnote, Susan, thank you for bringing that up. You saved my big speech for the end, but, I know, but for those of you who don't know, we were not consulted on this, we were not asked our opinion, we had no input into this bill. This bill contains a number of damaging, dangerous laws, which are going to restrict how we plan our growth, how we can manage our growth in the future. This is a dangerous bill for municipalities. If you like a small-town character, if you like the ability for towns to control their own future, then please, go to Forsyth County's website, look at our delegation, and there are nine of, eight of them, please email them immediately. Tell them, it used to be 765, but they're trying to fool you now by changing it to 205. Please do not vote for this. We'll go to the House next week for a vote on the floor. This is critical, folks. Please, 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 make your voices heard at this point. Anyone else? Council members, any final thoughts? I'm waiting, Ms. Hunt.
I'm okay. I missed last week, everyone, and I was really, had to get caught up tonight, so thank you all for hearing my voice.
Mayor, I do have one thing I'd like to add.
Yes, sir.
And this very well could be the wrong place, so tell me if you want me to hush, I'll oblige. I'm a little concerned that two individuals on the committee voted no to a resolution earlier, or ordinance earlier. I just think going forward, the committees will look a little harder at what the position is to bring it before council. I think, if I'm wrong, I could be wrong, that if a committee doesn't want it to go to council, they can stop something from going to council if they feel that it doesn't oblige with what the town's policy has been. So I just would encourage us to look a little harder in the future at things that may come up.
Thank you.
For some clarification on that, Mayor, I think it has to go before council. I think committees don't have the final word. They have the recommendation, as the staff also has the recommendation, but the final yes or no goes before council.
I think it only comes, actually, it only comes to council if the committee approves it. If the committee turns it down, I don't think it comes to us. It's only when we have expenditure of dollars.
Well, we had turned it down, and then it came to us.
You're right. So correct...
Can we get clarification?
You wanted all that.
Yeah, because there's more, there's other information that came out. But, yeah, we need to kind of clean that up.
What's done, I'm not, I'm really just making that statement for future reference. I mean, I don't, we're not going back or changing anything. I just want to make sure I'm clear and that everybody else is clear of what occurs in the future.
Are you able to clarify at this time what we're referring to when a committee has information that is presented to us, and then we, are we required to push that up to the board? And if we do, can you kind of go through what the procedure is on that? And if now, if you don't have that information...
I have not seen myself a procedure on that. There is one, I can certainly research it. I don't know of any establishment of that policy in, say, our ordinance or anything like that, but it could have been set up by some protocol that the council established in the past. I suppose regardless, that council right here, right now, can, you know, move to pass kind of whatever it wants on its own sort of initiative, but I can research if, what the policy is, and to make sure that we're consistent with it moving forward and know what we're doing.
Yeah, I think maybe that's a quick staff function, because we really, I don't think we really have established a process for grants, and that's a good suggestion. Thank you, and we'll pass that off to the manager to take a look at and maybe establish the process so that we're all familiar with what needs to be done.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Council members, anything else? If not, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. Always love to see your faces. Those of you watching at home, thank you for taking time out of your day to be with us, to learn about the matters and issues that come before your council and your town. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Everybody wants to say it?
I'd hate to die for lack of a second.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Mr. Lawson makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous, and we're adjourned.